Yeah, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to start with a short prayer and I'll ask Counselor Crick to do that for us.
Lord, we thank you for this day and just thank you for the MD of Bonneville and the great place it is to live and work. And Lord, pray your blessing upon everyone that lives here and everyone that works here. Pray your continued protection and blessing on the farmers as they finish getting their harvest off this fall. And ask for wisdom in our meeting here today as we make decisions. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Yeah, thank you, Counselor Crick, for that opening prayer. I need the adoption of agenda. I just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. Yes, the administration has several recommendations for additions. Under Planning and Community Services 8.2.4, Angling Lake Boat Launch Project Update. Under 8.2.5, Policy 3A.015 Land Acquisition Policy Amendment. Under 8.3.2, Discontinuation of Recording Council Meetings. Under 8.4.1, Policy 4A.005, Snow Plowing of Driveways Policy Amendment. Under Closed Session 11.1, A Legal Update, FOIP Section 27. And I believe Counselor Skarson had indicated to me that he has something he'd like to add as well.
We have the 2026 Winter Game Discussion.
That's 11.2.
Will that be a closed session, Counselor Skarson, or an open session?
That's right.
Okay. 8.2.5 is Policy 3A.015 Land Acquisition Policy Amendment.
All right, any other additions? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, accept the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Subrick, for making a motion to accept the amended agenda. Right up there. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. I'm looking for the adoption of the minutes of regular meeting of council, September 12, 2023. Yes, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making the motion of the regular meeting of council, September 12, 2023. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Also looking the adoption of minutes of committee meeting of council, September 19, 2023. Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making the motion that council approves adopting minutes of September 19, 2023, committee of the whole meeting as presented. Any discussion on this mo- motion, gentlemen? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. We're going to business arising from the minutes, 5.1, BFRA Agreement Review.
Mr. Reeve, if I could suggest for the Reeves' consideration that that just be dealt with, it's an in-camera item. I would suggest we just leave that till the end and do all the in-cameras in one session.
Sorry about that. Onto six, 6.1 Development Application, D189.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is Development Permit Application 2023-D-189 for Dennis and Betty Kowalczuk. The applicant is applying for a rear yard variance from 25 feet to five feet for the construction of a detached garage. The property is located in the fourth block of the Murray Lake Multi-Lot Subdivision. Adjacent properties are residential parcels and a provincially owned reserve. The applicant is applying for a rear yard variance from 25 feet to five feet for the construction of a 32 by 26-foot detached garage. The front yard is accessed, or determined by the access to the parcel from the internal subdivision road. This means that the south property line is the front and the north property line is the rear. They are requesting this variance due to the size of the lot and the location of the water well, which will be 10 feet from the proposed garage location. Similar setbacks have been approved in this area due to the size of the lots. As per Section 20 of the Land Use Bylaw, variances may be considered when there are practical difficulties unique to the land and when they will not interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties. This request would allow the house and garage to sit at similar setbacks in the neighborhood. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on September 6th and we received no concerns. Our recommendation for development application 2023-D-189 is approve the request for a rear yard variance from 25 feet to five feet for the construction of a detached garage as a discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 32, and Part 7, Section 71.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. As per Section 71.4 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 1667, the minimum setback shall be front yard 7.6 meters, side yard 1.5 meters. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained on site in a waste bin or covered in closed trailer. As per Section 32 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 1667, an accessory building shall not be used as a dwelling. A permanent accessory building shall not be located on an easement or utility right-of-way. An accessory building shall be a minimum of two meters as per fire code regulations from the principal building. Building location to be staked out by an Alberta Land Surveyor, CET, or other approved designation in Alberta and submitted for approval by the MD of Bonneville prior to commencement of construction upon foundation, but prior to inspection, Alberta Land Surveyor Building Certificate shall be approved or provided to the development authority.
Thank you. Well done. Lots of talking this morning. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I just have a quick question. Was there existing building ever on that, on that property where this is going?
Not where this, actually, sorry, wait. No.
There was, okay. Must be thinking of the next one down to it, very similar to it. So I, so in regards to, so I guess the topography of the land will have to stay the same as well, right? They can't build it up or anything like that because I know there's some real drainage issues over in those areas. Just make sure that it doesn't influence any kind of regular drainage that's, that's there.
Yes, through the Reeve to Deputy Reeve Faddeh, they do have to have regard to ensure that they don't change the grade to negatively impact any other residences there.
Okay, sounds good. Based on that, I'll, I'll make the recommendation to approve it.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Faddeh, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves development permit application number 2023D189 for year, sorry, for a rear yard variance from 25 feet to five feet for the construction of a detached garage within southeast 2165 to west of the Fourth M as discretionary use pursuant to Part 3, Section 20, Part 6, Section 32, and Part 7, Section 71.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Dennis and Betty Kowalczuk as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
You too.
Onto seven, 7.1.
All right, good morning.
Morning.
All right, so this application is to consider the subdivision of northwest 3061 five west of the Fourth Meridian in order to create 12 parcels which can be seen on attached appendix A. The Municipal District of Bonneville is proposing the subdivision of the subject parcel. The current area for the subject parcel is approximately 47.5 acres. The proposed subdivision is located within the town of Bonneville and Municipal District of Bonneville Intermunicipal Development Plan Area. The IDP mentions protecting the airport area from incompatible land uses and development, but does not place any specific requirements regarding subdivision or development. All of the hangers that you can see on the maps here are existing at this time as well. The MDP, or the Municipal Development Plan, sorry, does not provide any specific regulations regarding the airport and the proposed subdivision meets the MDP. There is no applicable area structure plan for the area and the Land Use Bylaw designates this area as agricultural district. And this proposed subdivision meets all requirements under the Land Use Bylaw as well. Referrals were sent out to referral agencies and adjacent landowners. Telus has requested that the registration of a right-of-way be granted and the MD Transportation noted the need for a seven-meter top on the access road. No other concerns or were received regarding this proposed application. And with that, it is being recommended that the subdivision application be approved with the following conditions. One, that the approach be installed with a seven-meter top for access to the proposed parcels. Two, that a real property report or sketch be submitted with the finalization of the subdivision. Three, that the sewage disposal be installed and comply with the Alberta Safety Codes Act. And four, that all outstanding property taxes be paid. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Yeah, just a simple one. There's, the photo shows 14 lots, but four and five are combined, so it'd be 13 lots, is it?
So the, yes, so the initial photo at the top there, down one right there, shows 14 lots. Those were just kind of the initial ideas that were being presented. That's just an aerial to better show some of the hangers and stuff that's showing. But if you scroll down to the, these ones here, you'll see that it comes out to a total of 12 lots in total.
Okay, and, and those, like, there's hangers and buildings on those lots already, so
Yes.
Were they just, I'm not quite sure how. Yeah, explain to me how that happens and what, now we're putting, now we're subdividing those off, I guess, or whatever, legally, I'm not sure.
Yep, absolutely. So, yeah, it's, there's no change to the actual lay of the land or anything like that. The intention here is for the subdivision to go through and then the sale, possible sale of the lands to the leaseholders. And if, if they do not want, if they are not looking to purchase the land, the land may be sold off from there with, within accordance to our land acquisitions. And in terms of, does it have any impact on the existing buildings or anything like that? Nope, they just continue to exist as they are.
Okay, when you said leaseholders, then I, I realized what was, what's happening here and I, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of that. These guys can then, I guess, get rid of a lease or whatever and then own the lots and then sort of allows maybe more growth or whatever around the airport. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Through the Reeve to council, the vast majority of the landowners are quite excited about the subdivisions. Of course, the next hurdle will be what a lot will actually cost. We've had, we've got some estimates. And, and of course, coming soon will be the Airport Area Structure Plan, which will define some of the uses that we will allow and won't allow with the airport. But by and large, this is, this is meant with, with approval from the, from the current leaseholders. It is difficult, for example, from an economic development standpoint, if we were going to try to attract maybe an aircraft mechanic shop to come out and open up, it's hard to get a mortgage on leased property. So if a fellow wanted to come out and borrow some money to build a, to build a shop out there, most, most banks won't look at that kind of a loan if you don't actually own the dirt that the building is going to sit on. So leased lot is, is not really, it's not conducive to long-term growth.
So also what you're saying is there might be other lots that come available to the?
Yeah, I think through the area structure plan, everything, and this diagram doesn't show, but everything further to the east, the large area on the other side of Bonneville Flying Services, those will also be a future growth area and they can be, we've talked internally about potentially splitting them up into larger lots. So if somebody wanted to build a large facility, you could, somebody could probably have an acre, maybe an acre and a half, a much larger lot towards the east end as well.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Counselor Skarson.
So when it's, when these are subdivided, then whoever's in these currently has to buy them?
If I may, so they do not have to buy them. However, if they do not purchase them, this is currently municipal, MD-owned land and then we would be looking to sell it to the next available party.
So they, so that, so if someone doesn't, if someone's in there now and they don't buy, then it'll go for sale for someone else to?
Correct.
Buy?
Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Same kind of question, though. They're, they're probably locked into a bit of a lease, though, aren't they, these lots? So they'd have a year or two or three or whatever before their lease run up runs out?
Our, our leases are, are basically month-to-month at this point or year-to-year at this point on those properties. So there wouldn't be that big an issue. What we're really trying to do is to tighten up the regulations of the airport to what you can do with a lot at the airport to make sure it's related to aviation. And the vast majority of the landowners have, have indicated to me and through the flying club that they are prepared to purchase a lot if the prices come in at a reasonable, at a reasonable number. So I don't think there's going to be a, a large issue. I think there are one or two who aren't specifically using the land specifically for aviation purposes that, that may be somewhat disadvantaged. But the vast majority that have airplanes and hangers and want to keep their airplane out there are, are likely to be quite excited about the opportunity to buy land. But yes, it does mean that somebody who doesn't want to buy, we would probably put the land up for sale, lease it to them until such time as the land sells and then they'd have to vacate. And vacating is a bit more difficult because most of them own their own hangar, but they don't own the land. So they'd have to either walk away from their current investment or tear it down and move it to some other location.
Yes, Counselor Slipchak.
Is there a timeframe that we're going to give these guys extension, like, once we decide on the value of the property, that they're a longer timeframe, seeing as they're existing owners?
I would suggest that we're probably a minimum of a year. Yeah, it's not going to be overnight. We're not looking to roust somebody up. We want to give everybody the opportunity to, you know, to, if they have to find financing and do whatever they need to do to purchase the lots. We have some indication where a lot price is going to come in. I don't really want to make that public at this time because they're still, they're still tentative numbers, but they're fairly reasonable and for the type of property that it is. And, but I, but we are certainly not looking to, to create hardship for anybody who's currently there.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Slipchak.
Another question was about the approaches. Are we going to be in charge of them or the landowner?
Most of those properties right now have some sort of approach, but if there are approach issues, they would just fall under our current approach policy, whatever that is.
Counselor Skarson.
So the, would the landowners have first right to, to buy? Like, is that any different than leased land for grazing and stuff? Like, they have the first right to buy?
It would fall under our land acquisition po- policy where the current landowner would have right of first refusal. And if it went up for tender, they would have the right to meet a tendered offer that was better than theirs as the, as the current landowner. Our land acquisition policy indicates that for grazing leases for other leased land, it would, it would be identical to that. We are not going to take a current landowner and somebody else coming to us and saying, listen, I'll give you five grand extra. We would certainly go back to the current landowner and say, listen, this is, this is where we're at. So.
Well, they don't own the land, the lease.
They're, they're currently leased, so if somebody came in, but, yeah, the, the current landowner gets first crack at it, both by policy and by ethically.
It's the current leaseholder, not landowner.
Current, current leaseholders, yeah, leaseholders, correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Crick.
You'd mentioned putting sewer into them as well as one of the conditions. Is, is there, like, is it, these lots don't have sewer? Like, what does that mean exactly?
So actually, that's just a sort of a formality at this point. Upon review, all of the sewage disposals meet the Alberta Safety Codes Act. And so that condition would essentially be checked off right away.
Okay.
Any other, anyone want to make a motion or any other questions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves subdivision application 2023 S007 to subdivide 12 lots from CFT 212020226 plus one within the Bonneville Regional Airport as per the conditions presented. Is that still called the Bonneville Regional Airport? It is?
It's the MD of Bonneville Regional Airport.
Yeah, okay. It's the MD of Bonneville Regional Airport, okay. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Not that it matters, but are we gonna, are we gonna correct that on, on the vote on screen? Or is that just somebody is?
Well, we should, we should have it in there, but it's not, it's not a hill to die on, I don't think. Okay, that's Carrie, thank you.
Yes.
Turn your mic on. That's fine. So, yeah, no, the, it says vote closed on top of my screen. It keeps flashing. Can you stop that? We just had an active vote and that came up too in green and I voted, but this one just says vote closed? And that's something that I think you guys control? Nope, no problem. Just for the guys with their last names with the S. Hey, we're gonna take a five-minute, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay, welcome back. I believe we're gonna go on to 8.2.1. That'd be the Four Wing Coal Lake. Morning.
Back on June 27th, regular meeting of council, a delegation was made by Four Wing Coal Lake presenting an event report on their 2022 Coal Lake Airshow. While they requested both financial and income support to sponsor and help the upcoming 2024 Coal Lake Airshow to be promoted through I21st and 21st. Council recommended the administration to bring their contract back to a future meeting for this relation. Further to the delegation presentation, which was incorporated in the attendance, administration received a copy of their official sponsorship opportunities package from Four Wing just recently. They also confirmed that they are requesting the MD consider a safety level sponsorship to be named to recreation sponsor if so requested, which is what we had done in 2022. And the total cost of this sponsorship was $50,000. Historically, as stated, this was valued at $40,000. More so due to inflation and then additionally on the cost. Coal Lake Airshow did not occur in 2022 due to the pandemic. However, people in the 2022 council had approved sponsorship for 2020 and then it was just very forward to 2022. The hash of council's information in the appendix A is the sponsorship package in their email request. MXP is the original delegation presentation. And MXP is an excerpt from the 2022 sponsorship agreement. Air, well, included in MXP's request today. Reference to our strategic plan is that this is a goal for us, number one, building the cost base and sustaining the community. Cost and source of funding is $50,000. MXP, source of funding options. We can either budget through the community action grant reserve and replenish it to fund the 2024 operating budget to be confirmed during our budget separations. Or we can plan it in 2024 through the council grants to achieve this sponsorship organization. Administration's recommended action is that council approves the request for sponsorship by Four Wing Coal Lake for their 2024 Coal Lake Airshow in the amount of $50,000 as a safety recreation level sponsor to be funded from the community action grant reserve.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Mr. Reeve, yeah, thanks. I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the funding request for Four Wing Airshow.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making motion on behalf of council that council approves the request for sponsorship by Four Wing Coal Lake for their 2024 Coal Lake Airshow in the amount of $50,000 as a safety recreation level sponsor to be funded from the community action grant reserve. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Yes, Counselor Crick.
Through the Reeve to the administration, is, so is, am I correct in saying that we, other years have sponsored $40,000 to the event?
Through the Reeve, in 2022, we were a $40,000 level sponsor, correct?
And did that include GST as well, or was that over and above?
Through the Reeve, GST, we had them incorporate that into the total request. However, at the end of the day, the GST ends up, we end up getting it back once we file our GST returns.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Another question. Do we know what the other municipalities, the town and the city are contributing to this event?
I do not.
Yes, Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, I know in times past, the, the city of Coal Lake is a, is a major sponsor, probably for the 150. Bonneville's usually less. There is, there is a sponsorship level in the package there that's a host sponsor for, I think, 37 and a half thousand, which would put us right in, kind of in line with what we've done other years. And I guess since our budget really hasn't increased around here, it's decreased. If anything, I would recommend that we keep it on par with other years, not, not increasing it up.
Okay, I guess if the motion doesn't pass, we can go for a different motion, for sure. All right. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
The vote's not showing up on my screen here, that's all.
You have to click on it.
Okay, that's Carrie, thank you.
Through the Reeve, I did just jump on their website and the city of Coal Lake is a performing sponsor from last year. Enter Pipeline was a safety sponsor, Canadian Natural was also a safety sponsor, and we were listed as a recreation sponsor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to 8.2.2, Ronald McDonald. All right, we're moving on to eight point, two point two, Ronald McDonald.
So, the Ronald McDonald House Charities Alberta is hosting the twenty twenty-four Winterland Invitational Event and seeks support from the MD of Bonneville in the capacity of an ice level sponsor with a financial commitment of eight thousand dollars. The Winterland Invitational is a youth hockey tournament encompassing U nine, U eleven, and U thirteen in the Lakeland Region, which includes Bonneville, Coal Lake, El Point, and Glendon. The event is dedicated to bolstering youth in sport and the mission of the Ronald McDonald Houses in Alberta to improve the lives of families who are seeking treatments for their seriously ill or injured children. The twenty twenty-four Winterland Invitational is scheduled to coincide with the February-long weekend next year. RMHC applied under our Community Action Grant Program, however, their requested amount exceeds the five thousand dollar maximum sponsorship available through that associated policy. In twenty twenty-three, uh, their report, just a little bit of background of how the event was this past year, they had forty-eight teams playing eighty-six games spanning four venues and six ice surfaces, and brought seven hundred and fifty youth players and their families to the region for the tournament. They raised over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards the Ronald McDonald House. As an eight thousand dollar twenty twenty-four ice sponsor, the MD would receive proud provincial sponsor graphics for social media, logo recognition on sponsorship banner and in programs, specific recognition based on sponsorship level and event collateral mentions on social media, VIP tour of Ronald McDonald House of Choice, and the first write of refusal for twenty twenty-five sponsorship. Previous recent sponsorships provided by the MD to Ronald McDonald House includes the twenty twenty-three McCappy Day Event Prize Donation, uh, twenty twenty-two Golf Tournament Sponsorship of three thousand dollars, uh, the Winterland Invitational Events sponsorships from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-one, and in twenty twenty-three for eight thousand dollars. Attached for council's review is, uh, an Appendix A, their request letter, Appendix B is their sponsorship package, Appendix C is their twenty twenty-three event report. Reference to our strategic plan, uh, it supports goal number three, promoting community development. Cost and source of funding for the eight thousand dollar request, um, possible sources is our twenty twenty-three council operating budget, specifically councils' grants to individuals and non-government organizations, or the Community Action Grant Reserve. Administration's recommended action is that council directs administration to process the Ronald McDonald House Charities Alberta grant application submitted through our municipal Community Action Grant Program for the twenty twenty-four Winterland Invitational Event to a maximum sponsorship value of five thousand dollars. So, in other words, administration's recommendation is to flow this through the current Community Action Grant Program.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council directs administration to proceed with the Ronald McDonald House Charities Alberta grant application submitted through the MXP's Community Action Grant Program for the two thousand twenty-four Winterland Invitational Event to maximum sponsorship value of five thousand dollars. Any discussion, gentlemen, on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, on to eight point, two point three.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
Uh, we bring it forward, the adoption of the intermunicipal trails master plan. Um, at the regular meeting of council on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, council requested that the intermunicipal trails master plan presented by project consultant RC Strategies be brought forward for the further consideration and adoption. Uh, the intermunicipal trails master plan project was collaborative, grant-funded effort of the MD of Bonneville and the city of Coal Lake to guide improvements to the connectivity and quality of the region's trails and trail experiences for residents and visitors. These efforts were intended to function as a foundation and as a catalyst for the two municipalities to achieve their respective quality of life, community, environmental, and economic goals as we move forward with the respective councils, uh, during any, uh, future trail development discussions. Uh, the benefits, uh, successful trail destinations demonstrate that trails can be drivers of positive economic, social, and environmental change, particularly for smaller rural communities. If carefully planned, developed, maintained, and activated, uh, trails can directly benefit residents and be a driver for tourism. The trail system that the MD has, uh, already invested in has made, uh, a very positive impact for residents and outside users, as proven by statistics from installed traffic counters recently presented to council, uh, showcasing the overall usage to date this year. Uh, trails can also pose some disadvantages such as, uh, engineering and construction expenses and the operational maintenance costs necessary to attain the level of service expected by our residents. Upon the adoption of this plan, one, that both municipalities agreed to continue to collaborate through future meetings to discuss trail focus, locations, and establish trail development priorities. Two, that both municipalities meet with the respective provincial government departments to access the recently approved grant funding allocated for trail development within the province of Alberta, specifically on crown lands. Attached, uh, for council's reference is Appendix A, the intermunicipal trails master plan presentation, and Appendix B, the draft for the intermunicipal trails master plan. Uh, the reference to strategic plan would be goal three, promote community development. Uh, just a, a slight change here to, um, administration's recommended action in reference to our recreation master plan is that council adopts the intermunicipal trails master plan as presented, and furthermore, that council directs administration to incorporate it into the twenty twenty-one municipal recreation master plan and bring, uh, bring back future trail development recommendations to the twenty twenty-four municipal budget deliberations.
Looking for a motion. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Crick.
Yeah, um, I just have a few questions, I guess, about the trail plan itself. I, I went through it quite thoroughly this week, and, um, there's, there's a lot of trails right now that are currently on crown land, they're just kind of trails that people drive their quads on and enjoy, and it talks in there about, i- if I'm reading it correctly, anyways, it talks about kind of sh- closing those trails down, only having designated routes. Am I, am I right in saying that, or not, not?
Through the Reeve, can you repeat that again, sorry? Just?
It, it talks in the, in the trail plan about having, like, only designated routes through a lot of the crown land in the area, and I guess I would hate to lose kind of just the trails that are, are naturally occurring, and I say naturally occurring, they're occurring because people are driving, driving those spots through the, a lot of it's through the pine trees in the, in the area, kind of, there's lots of different areas around, like, there's Wolf Lake, there's round Moose Lake, uh, north of Moose Lake in the Dupree area, um, and I would just hate to see those, those trails kind of disappear, the ones that people drive on and only have the maintained designated trails, a- as opposed to just kind of the trails that exist right now.
Through the Reeve, um, well, I can't comment on exactly, you know, whether they're gonna get closed, but it certainly, I think that's the idea of, the benefit of, of having designated trail locations is that, uh, you're keeping riders or, or walkers, bikers, cyclists in those areas, and because of environmental impacts that they can have, uh, the trails that are already existing, I think, I mean, those are going to probably stay, I mean, I don't think, unless the province decides to come in and, and close those, but, uh, as for us, I don't believe we'll be involved in that. We, we have no authority on crown land.
Okay. So, if we go ahead and, and, uh, pass this, or I guess, recommend that, no, adopt the trail plan as presented and get it incorporated into the recreation plan, then, uh, the administration's gonna come back at budget with recommendations for trails in twenty twenty-four, is that correct?
Through the Reeve, yes, that is correct.
And, uh, I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion then, and request that, uh, from page one hundred and thirty-nine of the trail plan, where it mentions the connection from Emerald Estates, uh, into Bonneville, that one be considered for budget as well.
All right, thank you, Counselor Crick, uh, for your motion on behalf of council that council adopts the intermunicipal trails master plan as presented, and furthermore, that council directs administration to incorporate into the two thousand twenty-one municipal recreation master plan and bring back future trail development recommendations to the two thousand twenty-four municipal budget deliberations. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. On to two point, sorry, eight point, two point four.
Okay, I'll be speaking on the, the Angling Lake Boat Launch Project update there. Uh, the construction of the Angling Lake Boat Launch, uh, project undertaken in partnership with the Beaver Dam Recreation Society was originally brought forward and approved by council in December of twenty twenty at an estimated cost of thirty-five thousand. Although the project experienced, uh, several setbacks due to site complications and provincial regulatory approval delays, uh, the project is nearing full completion. Administration is requesting that council, uh, council's approval of an additional twenty thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents to cover the cost overage associated with these setbacks and complications encountered. The increase in costs incurred on this, on this project are from the following areas. Uh, one was the higher-than-expected contractor excavation cost for site prepping, installation complication, mitigation, and landscaping. Uh, projects working near or in a water body have very short windows to complete, uh, the actual site work and installation in order to minimize any potential environmental impacts. Uh, two, increased material costs associated with the use of concrete pads, uh, instead of concrete mats. The mat option, uh, proved to be problematic at other MD boat launch sites by the time materials for this project were procured, procured and ordered two years later. Uh, third was contracted crane services now required for placement of, uh, larger concrete pads. And four was the abnormal material inflation costs and supply chain issues encountered since the project's original inception in December of twenty twenty. The approved budget for this project, uh, accounted mainly for concrete mat materials and some contracted services, with the initial plan to mostly use internal resources to undertake the project. Unfortunately, the project budget value was not revisited in, in October twenty twenty-two when administration requested the project be carried forward as a capital initiative in twenty twenty-three. Uh, reference to the strategic plan was goal three, promote community development. The costs, uh, and source of funding, total budget amount was thirty-five thousand. Uh, total cost of the project will be fifty-five thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents. So, our shortfall is twenty thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents. And the shortfall covered in the twenty twenty-three parks operation budget, uh, coming from our repair and maintenance contracted services GL. Administration recommended actions that council approves the un, uh, an unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents for the Angling Lake Boat Launch Project to be funded from the twenty twenty-three parks operating budget.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Swiger.
Just a question about, uh, it's not finished yet, when, do you have a date when it will be finished for sure?
Uh, well, very soon, once, uh, through the Reeve, thanks, uh, once, uh, once we receive, uh, if we receive approval, uh, it'll be very, very quickly here that we're basically kind of just doing finalizing of landscaping at this point.
Is it usable right now, though, or?
It is usable right now, yes.
Okay, so it'll be done in, in a week or whatever?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the extra expense here.
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and fourteen fifty-three for Angling Lake Boat Launch Project to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three parks operating budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Hogan, should we do eight point, two point five, or should we, is that a fast one?
I, I believe you have time to do eight point, two point.
Okay, let's go on to eight point, two point five.
Administration is presenting policy three A point zero one five land acquisition policy to be amended. Due to the resistance encountered from landowners unwilling to sign agreements with the MD of Bonneville at the current prescribed rate for construction projects, a review of the land acquisition policy was completed. During this review, it was determined that increasing the compensation amounts may make it more palatable for landowners to sign land acquisition agreements with the municipality. The proposed amendments to the current policy will increase the compensation payable to the landowners from two thousand dollars per acre to twenty-five hundred per acre. As well, amendments proposed to increase the minimum compensation from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars. These proposed amendments, um, to the policy were presented to the committee of the whole on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and, uh, my apologies for the wrong reference of the policy in there, and the committee of the whole recommended, uh, to council to adopt this amended policy. Attached for council's review is the draft amended policy for consideration. Reference to our strategic plan is, uh, this relates to goal number three, promoting community development. Any cost and source of funding, um, there are very minimal impacts to our operating budget, uh, with an estimate of less than five thousand dollars per year increase to be noted moving forward. Our communication strategy is that if this is adopted, the policy will be available to the public by request and located on our website. Administration's recommended action is that council adopts amending policy three, uh, number C dash three A point zero one five land acquisition policy as presented.
Thank you. Counselor Craveak.
Thank you, I'll make a motion to approve as, uh, per, uh, recommendation, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Craveak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number C dash three A zero one five land acquisition policy as presented. Any discussion on this policy, gentlemen? I'll call for the vote then. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll, uh, take a little break before our, um, upcoming public hearings. Okay, welcome back, um, we have some public, I think we believe we have three public hearings, uh, now, so, before we begin with the public hearing for bylaw number eighteen fifty-three municipal development plan bylaw, I would like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of the council chambers. I would also like to outline the process to be followed for this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, followed by questions of administration from council. We will then call upon the members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public presenter during this time only. Administration, as applicant, will then be provided opportunity to rebut anything they have heard or read in the opposition of the application, followed by the questions from council, only on information. council, only on information provided during the rebuttal. Finally, we will entertain any final questions of administration from council before closing the public hearing. May I have a motion to open public hearing? Thank you, Deputy Ree, for making the motion to open public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. All right, I open the public hearing, I need administration to, administration presentation.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Great to see you all. Appreciate the opportunity to talk through the proposed draft of the municipal development plan and present this here at the, the public hearing. You can move on to the next slide. So just want to go through a bit of a summary of the, of the M D P as it stands here before you, a bit of a refresher just on the role of the M D P. One, this is a legislative requirement by the province through the Municipal Government Act. The last time the M D P was reviewed and updated was the original adoption of the two thousand seven municipal development plans, so through the work with the planning and development team here and administration, recognizing the significant change in context that has happened since the two thousand seven adoption, it was determined that the municipal development plan should go through a full review and a full update and amendment as, as necessary. So ultimately, the M D P establishes the framework for decisions that you make, balancing all of the competing interests and all of the demands that come before you. It is also the framework that is intended to live beyond council terms, so as you, as you note, the two thousand seven plan that was adopted is now being changed in two thousand twenty-three. It remains part of your overall policy decision-making framework beyond the individual council terms, so this is an important document for you and for future councils as well as part of the decision-making. The process itself has been part of an ongoing process to review all of the statutory plans that M D currently has, and looking at the context, looking at when they were adopted, and modernizing them as appropriate. So there were opportunities to connect both internally and externally in order to align all of the key directions with all of the other planning documents that you have. Scroll up, thank you. So the summary really starts with the purpose and authority that lays out the rationale for the update. So this acknowledges the changing context from two thousand seven, and it focuses on first and foremost the continuity, as we talked about, this goes beyond the individual council terms, and making sure there's a common framework across time, balancing the competing interests and demand. So this recognizes that you can't have all of the answers for everyone, and that there are competing interests on you, so it establishes that framework for how you, you go about making consistent decisions. There's a protection element in here that looks at how we make decisions to protect both public investment that come along with any growth and development, as well as the natural areas that may or may not be impacted by growth. And then guidance, it provides a framework in here to support your decisions so that you can make those consistent decisions over time. The authority of the plan, it does require to have certain elements in here that are outlined by the Municipal Government Act, so we ensure that we put all of the things recognized through the M G A within the municipal development plan itself. And then this is a higher-order plan, so there are intermunicipal development plans that would be over, over this one in particular, but those are often related specifically to your relationship with the adjacent municipal neighbor. This one for the M D itself is the higher-order plan, and then anything that comes forward as far as area structure plans or any changes to the land use bylaw, that is the regulatory tool that actually implements the policy put forward here, has to align with the policy that we establish within the municipal development plan. So the context piece took a high-level overview of what has been changing since two thousand seven, how, why are we at a situation where we need to explore updates and amendments to the municipal development plan? As we look through the, the relevant data, we started to see very significant changes from the two thousand seven context where there was a, a population, a lot of subdivision activity, a lot of anticipated population growth, population growth has been slowing and the population has been aging. There's still a stable assessment base as part of the overall exploration of the, the economic development, but it has shown vulnerability to external drivers in, in energy and agricultural sectors over time, as those sectors have fluctuated, it has had localized impacts. And those impacts do have impacts on the fluctuations of the labor force and any of the planning and development activity. So as the economy provincially, nationally, internationally is, is growing in those sectors, there's a lot of activity here locally, as those things change, that, that impact trickles down to, to the M D itself. So we wanted to use that as a bit of a baseline for how we evaluated changes to the two thousand seven M D P and how we looked at the existing context and the relevance to those changing We also wanted to engage externally and explore these, these priority areas, these new directions with the community to both identify and validate some of this key direction and priorities that have been established, and in conversations with the community over a series of, of public events, over a series of communications virtually, the key themes that they came out in terms of alignment with a lot of the, the parties that you've established as council is preserving agriculture and rural character, looking at preserving and leveraging the natural areas and leveraging these areas to increase access publicly and for tourism and economic reasons, supporting a diversification of economic activities and opportunities, and balancing growth and preservation. So there's an understanding that there needs to be some level of growth and new opportunities for development, but that can't be at the ex, expense of preservation and, and maintaining those areas that establish the rural character and identity of the M D. So section two moves into the community guide, and this is really the, the base framework for how we think about the decisions that get made. And this, this wasn't throwing the, the two thousand seven plan out and starting from scratch, this is really building on the strategic priorities that were established within that plan, the direction that was established within that plan, and then building from the strategic priorities that you had identified in your updated strategic plan. So this section in and of itself establishes the foundation for the plan and the guide for how decisions get made. So the, the visual there establishes the visual guide that is at the beginning of the M D P and establishes a bit of an executive summary for how the plan unfolds. So it's broken down into some of the priority focuses, focus areas, so this is establishing key priorities that are both intended to balance the short-term context and recognizing that you're making decisions in, based on what's in front of you today, and requests that are, are based on the characteristics of today, but balancing that with the long-term aspirations and the long-term vision that you've established through this plan and through other priorities that you have in, in other documents. So looking at those key priority areas and focus areas is one is to diversify the economy, making sure that you're able to accommodate industrial uses, other businesses, but that they are complementary to the character of the community and the rural character of the community. The quality of life is looking at decisions that how, how do we make sure we're providing an, an opportunity for people to move here, who want to stay here, but that it's part of being part of a rural, a rural community, a rural way of life, and that you're making decisions to maximize the return on your investment when you're thinking about public, public purchases, public investments in, in new infrastructure associated with planning and development. We want this to have a clear decision-making process and that this provides a unified approach to how decisions get made, and that there's a clear understanding and rationale in, in using the plan, how the plan is incorporated into planning and development approvals, and that preserving rural character and sustaining the rural landscape is critically important both internally, externally, and how the future of the M D is to unfold. Further to the community guide, there are principles of decisions, recognizing that we need to connect key priorities, but that we acknowledge there's flexibility in how the plan gets used and implemented. So this isn't a, a very overly prescriptive document that outlines a lot of black and white rules, we recognize that there's a lot of things that we can't possibly predict and put into every single plan, so we need flexibility in decision-making, but those, that flexibility needs to be rooted in principles of how decisions get made. So we think about how we engage with citizens and provide citizens to engage with the decisions that are being made and, and participate in understanding how those decisions get made, but recognizing there also needs to be communication with the citizens to recognize the evolution in, in the context and evolution in the priorities that, that people are seeing. Fiscal resiliency has been identified as a, as a key principle in how decisions get made, recognizing that the M D needs to incorporate more of an asset management approach to how they prioritize public investments and how we think about the long-term use of, of the infrastructure that you already have and how to benefit and leverage those opportunities that exist. Environmental stewardship, recognizing that we preserve and leverage those natural resources that can support a variety of, of opportunities within the M D, and that a spirit of cooperation and ongoing partnerships and collaboration with other jurisdictions are critical to the overall health of the region and to the M D as a whole. Section three starts the individual policy sections, so this outlines each of the, the individual chapters. The first is the economy and workforce that looks to balance business retention and expansion to sustain a balanced tax base for the M D. And this is looking at broader partnerships and opportunities both to remove any barriers that may exist through any of the existing plans or regulatory frameworks, but also to explore new opportunities through non-traditional partnerships and how you can explore ways to, to connect with other sectors, other neighbors, to think about the betterment of the region as a whole. Looking at opportunities to leverage the natural resources to expand the tourism base, both as a way to attract other people to the community, as well as diversify the, the local economic activity as well. And then recognizing the importance of, of balance to ensure that the impacts of any new industrial or commercial development are minimized on any adjacent land uses or in, any adjacent neighbors. So a bit of a theme around the balance piece and recognizing that while we want to explore business expansion and, and retention opportunities, that it can't come at the expense of, of those who are right beside it. The second one looks at agriculture and rural character, and this aims to protect good agricultural land as a way to preserve that rural identity. So we continue to recognize agriculture as a key feature of the municipal identity and as a key component of the municipal economy. And through that recognition of, of the importance of agricultural lands, we want to explore ways to limit the conversions of viable agricultural lands for development and continue to support opportunities for agricultural-related businesses, whether that be live-work opportunities on existing agricultural operations or for egg, egg-based business expansion in, in areas that are suitable for it. The parks, recreation, and open space section continues to support diverse opportunities for recreation areas, for preservation of natural areas, and ensuring that there's public access where appropriate, and also continuing to evaluate needs for open space and recreation opportunities. We want to encourage multi-use wherever that is possible, with, and in some cases, that may mean isolating certain things if there are opportunities for off-road vehicles, but where we can provide trail connectivity into natural areas, recreation facilities, we want to explore that multiple use wherever we can. And then as part of the continual conversation with the community and understanding the evolution of community needs and the community context, we want to make sure that you're able to consider changes as the needs evolve and as you start to think about how the, the public recreation needs and opportunities are changing over time as the community continues to, to grow and change itself. The environmental section focuses on preserving natural areas in any environmentally significant areas as part of the, the responsibility to protect the, the regional ecosystem, recognizes the function and value of the natural environment and the various roles that, that water resources play and the importance of having strong protective features on these areas that aren't intended necessarily to limit development, but to ensure that we're able to maximize the, and leverage the use of the natural areas in complementary ways to accommodate additional growth opportunities, and ensuring that we're incorporating environmental preservation into all of the sustainable decision-making that comes with, with any application for future growth and development opportunities. So another area from the municipal government act that requires us to talk generally about transportation and servicing, has its own section to think about how we explore transportation needs, any municipal servicing needs that are compatible with the scale of whatever the proposed development looks like. So we need to ensure that new development is integrated with any transportation or servicing systems that already exist, and that development and infrastructure is considered again through an asset management lens that considers what the long-term fiscal impacts of this infrastructure are on the M D. So we acknowledge that not all development is going to require significant investment in transportation or municipal services infrastructure, but when it does, we need to ensure that we're thinking about it through the lens of fiscal resilience and what the long-term potential impacts may be financially on the municipal district once you own and operate that infrastructure. The final policy section is collaboration and partnerships. So we recognize the, the regional scale of, of many of the priorities and opportunities that have been identified and, and articulated within the M D P, and many of these, the M D simply cannot deal with on its own, some of these cross borders, the economy is rarely contained to individual boundaries, and the, go well beyond your own borders as well. So we want to explore and ensure that the municipality continues to explore collaborations through mutually beneficial partnerships to increase your own capacity in tackling some of the priorities and dealing with some of the opportunities that may be before you. So this includes looking at partnerships through the lens of other relationships with other jurisdictions, other levels of government, and the private sector as well, and it's also a process for continued conversations with the community to stay on top of some of the changing context and ensure that the community is engaged and has the capacity to participate in the decision-making process. We look at section four, focusing on land use and growth management, again bringing the, the term balance into this section, looking at opportunities for diverse development that complement the priorities that have been established within the plan. So we want to focus development in areas that minimize any impact on, on the natural areas, we want to focus development on areas that will minimize any impacts on adjacent land uses or adjacent land users, and also in areas that where we can maximize the use of existing infrastructure networks, where you've already made investments or have investments in infrastructure in parts of the community, we want to explore opportunities where we can prioritize development opportunities there to maximize that investment that you've already made. So through that, we help to strengthen the viability of existing hamlets. We do want to balance housing options through, throughout the municipality, but it's done through evaluation, evaluating the relationship between the supply of lots that are already there, what we already have or known subdivided lots that are, have approval for residential uses with the market demand, so we're not against development, but we want to balance that, that new development coming in with the existing lots that have already been put online. And looking at new development opportunities, again, to support the resilience of the economy, so we want to be open to industrial, commercial, any type of business development opportunities, again, focusing on how they are complementary to the priorities that we've established within the plan and ensuring that they fit within the overall direction. And the final section speaks to administering and updating the plan. So we recognize that the, the growth has slowed and that there are significant opportunities for development within planned areas throughout the, the municipality, and that any proposed development or any other proposed development would require a detailed planning to ensure alignment with the plan. So anything that comes forward would have to demonstrate how it fits in with the overall direction of the plan and how the demand for whatever that proposed development can be accommodated through their ability to maximize the efficient and effective use of the site that they're proposing. Any amendment can be considered or requested at any time, can be considered or, or driven by the, the M D itself, or requested by any landowner who would like their proposal to be evaluated based on any changes that might be required of the M D P. And at a minimum, this would be reviewed on five-year time intervals to ensure that the M D can the M D can stay on top of the contextual changes in the community and review and update as necessary. And that concludes the summary of the proposed municipal development plan.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we have one written submission that was received. I'm going to take a ten-minute recess to take a look at this written submission, and then we'll come back and and reconvene at ten forty. Okay, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting has reconvened, and this late submission will be added to the public agenda patch following today's package following today's meeting. The present, the people present in support of this bylaw eighteen fifty-three will have five minutes for an individual and ten minutes for groups to speak. At this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone wishing to speak in support of bylaw eighteen fifty-three. Okay, for the second time, I'm wishing if there's anyone here to wish us to speak in support of bylaw eighteen fifty-three. And for the third and final time, I'm looking if there's anyone wishing to speak in support of bylaw eighteen fifty-three. Okay, seeing none. Also, if you're in opposition, you have five minutes for an individual and ten minutes for a group. At this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in opposition of bylaw eighteen fifty-three. And for the second time, I'm I'm looking if there's anyone in opposition that wishes to speak on behalf of by law eighteen fifty-three. And for the third and final time, looking if anyone is in opposition of bylaw fifty-three and wishes to speak. Okay, is there, is there any final questions of administration? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to close this public hearing. Thank you, Councilor Kravjak. Any discussion on this motion to close public hearing? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Okay, this is bylaw L U five seven five. Before we begin the public hearing for bylaw number L U five seven five, mending bylaw, I would like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of council chambers. I would also like to outline the process to be followed for this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, followed by questions of administration from council. We will then call upon members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of the public presenter during this time only. Administration, as an applicant, will be then provided opportunity to rebut rebut anything they have heard or read in opposition of the application, followed by the questions from council, only on the information provided during the rebuttal. Finally, we will entertain any final questions of administration from council before closing the public hearing. May I have a motion to open public hearing? Thank you, Councilor Sutrick, for making a motion on opening public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Administration, presentation.
Bylaw number L U five seven five is being presented for public hearing. This proposed bylaw is to create new district, direct control districts within the M D of Bonneville. These direct districts are direct control district number five, municipal districts of Bonneville, regional airport Y B Y, and direct control district number six, industrial direct control district dot D C I. We are creating the airport district. The general purpose of this district is to provide site-specific development controls that will provide opportunities for the continuing aviation operations of the Bonneville Regional Airport. Any development must be directly related to the aviation industry. The direct control district number six, the industrial direct control district, the general purpose of this district is to allow direct control by council over the development of lands for industrial purposes. Bylaw number L U five seven five was given first reading at the August twenty-second council meeting. Referrals to adjacent municipalities were completed on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three with no concerns returned. Referrals to landowners adjacent to the airport, airport leaseholders and stakeholders were completed on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and we received no concerns. The public hearing notice was advertised in the local paper on September fifth and September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and on the M D of Bonneville's website. This is in accordance with section twenty two sixty, sorry, two sixteen point four and six zero six point one of the Municipal Government Act and the intermunicipal development plan. This proposed bylaw complies with the municipal development plan, which include encourages economic development by providing policies which are attractive to businesses with the required infrastructure to support growth and development. The M D P policies encourage safe, efficient, and cost-effective transportation systems that meet the present and future needs of the residents and industry. This bylaw is also consistent with the Highway twenty-eight and Highway forty-one area structure plan, which encourages development at the airport. Any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to announce at this time that there has been no written submissions that have provided for this agenda package. At this time, I'm looking for the president who's going to present in support, and if you're an individual, you'll have five minutes, and if you're for a group, you'll have ten minutes. So at this time, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of L U five seven five? Okay, for the second time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in support of L U five seven five. And for the third and final time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak on the in support of L U five seven five. Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to state at this time, if you're a presenter for the opposition, you'll have five minutes as an individual and ten minutes for a group. So at this time, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of L U five seven
Hello, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm Dustin Spence, owner and president of Bonneville Air Services here in Bonneville. It's been a family-run business since nineteen eighty, has always been based here in the Lakeland, servicing Alberta, B C, and into eastern provinces as well, Quebec. We've worked, done work out there. I am mostly all for the bylaw number L U five seventy-five, but I have a few concerns that I have with the the letter that was sent out about it, and also I'm an active member with the Bonneville Flying Club. A lot of it to do is with the outside storage and display, part of the bylaw. It's for me, because I've never been part of anything like this, any legal, how things are written, but I'm taking it as it's basically saying no outside storage of of equipment or 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 stuff like that. And my business is in aerial application, both in agriculture and in the oil field. We do pipeline reclamation, and then we spray for for farmers. So with the seasonal business, we not only have our spray planes, but we have support trucks, trailers, the cam handlers, hoses, pumps. We have all these things that we use seasonally. And in the off-season, which is most of the year, you know, nine months of the year, currently we'll store this stuff in our our C can beside our hangar there at the Bonneville Airport. And then we have our trucks and trailers are parked neatly outside in a row at our current lease lot at the airport. In in D, it says no storage C cans shall be permitted in this district. I understand that C cans can be an eyesore at times if they're, like currently mine is, is not a pretty color. It's a, it's an orange. It's not nice to look at, but it is essential for the storage of my equipment in the off-season. If maybe an amendment could be made that they have to be a specific color or match the outside of the hangar or or something like that, I'd be all for that. And then also for the the parking and storage of equipment, it seems very broad, saying it's not going to be allowed, and it has to be inside our hangar, which our our current hangar is sixty by forty. It's it's not big enough to park this, all this equipment inside my hangar, especially but also in another part of the by law, it says a percentage of the of inside the hangar has to be an airplane. Well, all of my equipment that I have at our location is to do with the aviation business, but it's not all airplanes. Yeah, so I I'm, Bonneville Air Services, I believe, is the only strictly aviation business at the airport at the moment, and I I'm a big supporter of of getting more aviation businesses there, but I just would like the new bylaw to not affect my current business that has been there since nineteen eighty and has always been at the Bonneville Airport. That that's pretty much my concerns on it. I I have no problem with the fencing and and understand keeping things neat and tidy and and visually pleasing to look at, but I'd like consideration for the equipment and things that I need to conduct my work with my business can be thought about in moving forward with the bylaw.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, okay.
Good morning.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I was just going to call if anybody else wanted to come up, and you're there, so good.
My name is John Vardy. I've currently have a the hangar at the airport as well. I've been at the airport for twenty-five years and had various hangars out at the airport, and right now I have the the number two hangar. I'm also concerned about the the section six, the no storage of C cans permitted at the district. If there was some way to amend that to include, like Mr. Spence said, C cans that we use. Currently, I have many aircraft coming in from from various places, Saskatchewan, around Alberta, coming in for service and maintenance at my hangar, and it's, again, we can't store everything inside. I have two C cans right now on my site that, like Mr. Spence's, are they're they're not painted the best color, but I just recently got an appraisal to have a a roof put on, and the 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 two C cans colored, painted to match the color of my hangar, so that's it's eye-pleasing and whatnot. So I'm just wondering if we can, if somehow that section D for for the no storage of the C cans could be amended to say that's somehow acceptable if they if they match the hangars and are not a an eyesore or something like that. So I'm say, I'm faced with the same thing. I can't store everything in my hangar. I've got aircraft in there now, but I need the outside storage, both for flammable liquids and aircraft parts and and those types of things that are stored in there, so that's my concern as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else for the second time that wishes to speak in favor of, no, sorry, opposed of L U five seven five?
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
My name is David Bowler. I'm part of a member of the Bonneville Flying Club, and also associate of John Vardys and also Spencer. One thing in support of the C cans on the safety point of view, these hangars are typically wood structures, not necessarily metal. We do not have supporting fire hydrants or anything that exists at the airport as today that might be in the future. The thing, the advantage of a C can from a firefighting point of view is they can be labeled as dangerous goods if there's chemicals stored in that. So if there is an event of a fire, at least our responders have an idea what is enclosed in those structures. Right now, I do not say anything, mention of any of that from a safety point of view. So that's something we might want to consider in support of the C cans. You cannot, in a commercial business, just put everything within a a set fireproof box just based on volumes. You talk to any commercial operator in the industrial area, they have C cans for some of those purposes, maybe yes, maybe no, but they are hazardous goods. So it's something that needs to be considered if that isn't indeed the case. The other thing I noticed in in the reading, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Oh, here it is. It's addressing the, here it is, convenience vehicle rentals. In that section, it talks about minor vehicle servicing, storing, fueling, and/or car washing facilities. Are those going to be in a building? If we're discussing slightly of of what the appearance is, I don't I don't see anything addressing that. The other thing, and part of that, being an airport, I do not see anything addressing of aircraft washing and/or de-icing of aircraft. Those are elements that I do not see in the bylaw that, to me, I think are potentially missed. The other part of it is the convenience of vehicle rentals. Who and how is that infrastructure going to be supported for the fueling of those air car, those cars, the car washing, namely, in the event of you have to retain the materials that come off those vehicles? How is that being addressed? If a future system is going to have a sewer system, who's going to pay for that? No different than the aircraft when you wash an aircraft. Aircraft's quite different from a vehicle in the sense that you're not having mud and stuff that can come from the oil field and be dumped on the ground. All you're looking at is residual dirt that's on an aircraft, which is quite minimal compared to a car. Those are my two points that I think we might want to look into and address further. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone else that wants to speak in opposition of L U five seven five?
Morning, council.
Morning.
Kurt Richard, president of the Bonneville Flying Club, who's been the president about ten years, had quite a bit to do on the back end anyway with the where the airport's going, and and just wanted to speak a little bit to what what does bylaw should be trying to achieve. At the end of the day, you know, we want to see more lots get developed. We want to see people there to buy them, right? This addresses a lot to do with commercial, and it's not really looking at the recreational side of things, so I feel like there's a bit of a misintent on that. But again, like, I think the the whole purpose is how do we, how do we, you know, get more people involved out there, right? Our our mission as a flying club, to the big part, is to try and encourage general aviation and get more people involved, not scare people away, right? So I would hope that, you know, as we continue to progress with the development of the airport, we're doing what we can to have the intent to encourage new businesses and recreational users of the airport to be out there, right? So because that's what, you know, ultimately, we want to see more airplanes at the airport. Only one question I had was on the calculation of the use of the space in the hangar. Like, we cite seventy-five percent of the footprint is supposed to be used to to support an aircraft or have an aircraft in there, but there's no calculation or there's no definition on how that seventy-five percent is calculated. So I would suggest that there's just a little bit more wording around it, like, are we talking about the length and width of the airplane that has to add up to seventy-five percent on the overall square footage, or are we talking about the actual physical space, the aircraft? Or are we talking about the actual physical space the aircraft covers, right? So just a little more definition around that would be, would be great in there and yeah, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Again, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone uh wishes to speak in opposition of LU five seven five? Okay, and for the third and final time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of LU five seven five? Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wanna rebuttal anything? No? Any final questions from administration? All right, I, I need uh, I need to turn my computer back on. Okay, I need a motion to close this public hearing. Counselor Crick, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion to that public hearing for item four point two be closed at eleven AM. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. All right, we're going on to bylaw eighteen fifty-five. Before I, I'd like to begin with the public hearing for bylaw number eighteen fifty-five, amending La Coria area structure plan. Bylaw, I'd like to remind those who wish to address any of the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speaker's list at the entrance of council chambers. I would also like to outline the process to be followed for this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, followed by questions of administration from counsel. We will then call upon members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Counsel may ask questions of the public presenter during this time only. Administration, as the applicant, will then be provided opportunity to rebut anything they have heard or read in the opposition of the application, followed by questions from counsel, only on the information provided during the rebuttal. Finally, we will entertain any final questions of administration from counsel before closing the public hearing. May I have a motion to open public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sutrick, for making a motion on behalf of counsel. That public hearing for item four point three, the open at eleven two AM. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Something wrong? Okay, thank you, that's carried. I'm gonna open the hearing and administration presentation. Go ahead.
We can bring up appendix A, please. Thank you. All right, so good morning, counsel.
Morning.
Today, we are looking at bylaw number eighteen fifty-five to amend the La Coria major area structure plan. Um, this amendment is a relatively minor textual change uh in order to allow for the implementation of different districts beyond just the rural industrial or RI district within the La Coria area. Uh, so more specifically, the, the areas identified for industrial use under the La Coria major area structure plan uh will be allowed to have um districts beyond just the RI district as mentioned. Uh, this amendment would change the wording under section six point six, as you see up on the screen there, of the area structure plan to allow any district utilized for industrial purposes uh to be allowed within the La Coria area. Uh, you can see the wording under section six point six has removed a specific reference to the rural industrial RI district and now um allows it open for the, uh, any district of industrial purposes. Um, we did send out referrals and no comments have been heard back from referral agencies or any uh landowners within the La Coria area. Um, and with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to announce at this time that there was no written submissions that have been provided for the agenda pa- for the agenda package. So at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in support of bylaw eighteen fifty-five? For the second time, I'd like to wish, to, to see if there's anyone that wishes to speak in support of bylaw eighteen fifty-five? And for the third and final time, I'd wish to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in support of bylaw eighteen fifty-five? Okay, seeing no one, I just, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that we, wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw eighteen fifty-five? And for the second time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw eighteen fifty-five? And for the third and final time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of bylaw eighteen fifty-five? Okay, seeing nobody, uh, any final questions for administration? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion on behalf of counsel that the public hearing for item four point three be closed at eleven oh six AM. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. There's something going wrong with that computer today. That's carried, thank you. Okay, thank you. I guess to go to eight point three point one, we probably need L. Uh, we'll start with Steph. Eight, eight point three point one.
So since last fall, oh, sorry, sorry, um, since last fall, council has approved a few amended and new terms of references uh for various municipal and regional boards and committees. In response to these changes, administration has prepared an amending bylaw to replace the amended documents and add the new ones. Uh, council did pass first reading for this bylaw on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Bylaw number eighteen fifty-six makes amendments to bylaw number seventeen forty-eight, boards and committees bylaw, as well as the amending bylaws for that bylaw. A brief summary of these amendments include deleting the reference to the Regional Economic Development Committee as it was um, as well as the associated terms of reference. Uh, council approved disbanding this committee at the two thousand twenty-two organizational meeting. Replacing Schedule A Committee of the Whole Terms of Reference, which was amended in October of twenty twenty-two. Replacing Schedule F Rural Community Policing Committee Terms of Reference, which was amended in July of twenty twenty-three. Adding reference to the Emergency Advisory Committee and attaching the associated terms of reference of Schedule H, which was adopted in November of two thousand twenty-two. And adding reference to the Regional Sports Tourism Committee and attaching the associated terms of reference of Schedule I, which was adopted by all councils as of June twenty twenty-three. Administration will also be seeking council approval to consolidate the boards and committees bylaw with all amendments into one document for ease of use by staff and the public. Attached for council's review in appendix A is the proposed bylaw eighteen fifty-six. And appendix B is the um bylaw number seventeen forty-eight, as well as um current amending bylaws in place. Uh, communication strategy once passed, uh, the bylaw will be made available on the MD website. Administration's recommended action is that bylaw number eighteen fifty-six be given second and third reading and then also that council approves the consolidation of bylaw number seventeen forty-eight. Boards and committees bylaw with any amendments approved through amending bylaws.
Looking for a, a motion, just, gentlemen, or discussion?
I'll make a motion for a second reading.
You'll make the motion? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sutrick, for making a motion on behalf of counsel. The council is also amending policy number C four eight zero zero. No, I'm on the wrong one here. Sorry. Moved by Counselor Sutrick that bylaw number eighteen fifty-six being the bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number seventeen forty-eight, boards and committees bylaw to be given second reading. I apologize for that, gentlemen. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Yeah, something's wacko with my... We need a third, uh, th- third reading now, correct?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadeev, for making a motion on behalf of counsel that bylaw number eighteen fifty-six be given third reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
And then just, I'm wondering if um counsel would be willing to approve consolidation of the bylaw as well?
Looking for one more motion, gentlemen? That's the third one down, okay.
We're just hoping to be able to consolidate the bylaw as well, so that it's easier to understand for the staff and public.
Anyone like to make this motion?
Yeah, I guess I was just under the impression that that was consol- for approving third reading was consolidating everything, but maybe I'm wrong in that.
Um, no, not necessarily. Right now, with, with the original bylaw and every amending bylaw, they're considered separate, um, separate documents. Um, and right now, the way the, the um CAO bylaw is written, we require council approval to consolidate any bylaw. So if we wanted to combine all amendments into one document, we do require council approval to do that.
Y'all make the motion to consolidate them.
Yeah, I know, but my computer goes somewhere else for some reason. All right, thank you, uh, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of counsel. The council approves consolidation of bylaw number seventeen forty-eight, boards and committees bylaw with amendments approved through amending bylaws. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to eight point three point two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Eight point three point two is discontinuation of recording council meetings. Early in twenty twenty, the coronavirus pandemic caused the restriction of public functions and in particular of the public's ability to attend council meetings in the gallery and in person. The MD of Bonneville moved to both live streaming council meetings digitally and to recording the meetings for airing on social media platforms. As the pandemic has since abated and as the MD ceased live streaming council meetings some time ago, the last vestige of the pandemic in the MD operations is a continued recording of the meetings for airing on MD's social media platforms. This, the proposal would be to cease those recordings. The COVID nineteen pandemic created an inability for all municipalities to continue public meetings. On April first, twenty twenty, the MD of Bonneville moved to live streaming and recording council committee meetings for later distribution in order to keep the public nature of council meetings and to meet the requirements of the special MGA legislation that was passed by the province to respond to the pandemic. Openness and transparency being paramount for good governance, the live streaming and recordings allowed the public to be present at council meetings even though they were not allowed to be physically present. Once the pandemic had ceased and on meetings, uh, even though they were not allowed to be physically present, once the pandemic had ceased and on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the MD of Bonneville discontinued the live streaming and opened council chambers to public participation. The last remaining remnant of the impact of the COVID pandemic on our organization are the recorded meetings, which are presented on social media. These recordings and downloaded videos do require significant staff time. As council chambers are once again open to the public and as recorded meetings are no longer required for pandemic purposes and as the MD did not record or publish recordings of council meetings prior to the pandemic, the committee to hold is recommending to council that recorded council meeting, meetings cease immediately. Uh, the change to our current practices, we advertise on all our normal platforms in accordance to the MD Public Notifications bylaw and the administration recommended action is that council approves the discontinuation of recording regular meetings if council is recommended by the committee of the whole effective for the October tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Council has uh several options, approve the discontinuation, amend the recommendation, or reject the recommendation of the committee of the whole.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Counselor Skarson.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious on to, uh, I guess what the cons are to continue uh recording and, and broadcasting the meetings.
What the cons are, what's the...
Yeah, like what, what, what kinda sparked the reason why we wanna stop doing that? I guess I'm just wondering because, you know, there was definitely a few people in this room that ran on uh transparency and, and said that we were being too closed door and now we're closing more doors, right? And, you know, I kinda look back and seen that we averaged anywhere between a hundred and seventy-five to uh as, as a high number to, you know, hundred as a low number of views on each of our meetings and those are people that aren't here during the day because they're working or whatever and I, I guess I see no reason why we would stop, except that we have something to hide, I guess, I'm not sure, so. I, I'm not sure what the discussion was around this.
I don't think we have nothing to hide. Uh, how, how, how is our numbers right now? Like you're saying we have a hundred and seventy-five, what's our actual numbers? Who's got the...
Well, you can go right on YouTube, I just told you what they were. So anywhere between a hundred and a hundred and seventy-five viewers.
Every meeting?
Every meeting.
Uh, Mr. Members of council, the, uh, the numbers in the, in the first two weeks post of, 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 of video being presented on YouTube specifically, the numbers range in around that fifty to sixty mark. Uh, videos that have been up for, uh, for longer, six months or longer, there are some that have reached as high as a hundred and seventy-five uh um over the long term. Uh, inside the first couple of weeks post of a council meeting, though, they, they tend to average in that fifty to sixty range.
Well, e- so even regardless, fifty to sixty people that aren't, you know, aren't able to make it here today, right, so. I don't know, as soon as this came up and people were obviously reviewing the minutes, I heard, I had um, you know, a few phone calls asking why we're doing that and then I said I didn't even realize it was on the agenda to talk about last meeting until I seen the minutes as well, so. Just curious as to the reasoning, that's all.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadeev? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
Uh, C.A.O., so how much time does, uh, staff put into, uh, presenting the videos online and going through all that, uh, what you call going through that process?
I couldn't put an exact number to it, potentially the communications bureau could help me with it, but, uh, on large, uh, files, for example, let's say that we had a council meeting that started at nine in the morning and ended at four in the afternoon, it was split into two and potentially three different YouTube videos, the upload time is significant. There are other things that staff can be doing, but they have to be monitored to make sure the upload takes place, uh, um, and that there's no glitches, and in some cases, they have to be re-uploaded. It is, uh, it is, uh, it is some work on a, um, uh, on a bi-weekly basis to actually get the videos up. It's not just hit a thing and send, like, sending an email, it requires to be monitored, it's a very heavy data file, uh, video being what video is, and, uh, it, it does take some work. I couldn't put in a number to it, but it's, uh, um, it's, it's probably three to four to five hours of actual staff time to get these videos out. And of course, the staff time during a council meeting where, where, uh, where we're constantly monitoring to make sure that the video is going out, audio is going out with it, it's a, it, there's, it's, it's a fairly complicated system. Um, and just to, uh, so council's aware, for example, the council meeting took place on September the twelfth, they, uh, which, two weeks ago, there are now up to seventy views. The August twenty-second council meeting had sixty-seven, uh, um, views, uh, uh, council meeting on July eleventh had eighty-eight views, and there is also a fairly heavy staff component to how many, uh, how many people are watching YouTube as well. What that is, I couldn't tell you exactly, but I do know that staff are monitoring or watching the next day to see, uh, to see what happened, and we encourage that, for staff to be aware of what's going on at council chambers.
Also, other councils are, are watching it as well. I'm sure there's at least, uh, from the city or the town or watching. Go ahead, Deputy Reeve.
So, another question is, uh, are we the only ones that are proposing to drop it? There's, uh, is like, is there other municipalities that are doing this?
It is my understanding, um, and I stand to be corrected, but it's my understanding that County St. Paul just recently dropped their YouTube. Uh, I also understand that another municipality in, in Zone Five has also, uh, has also deleted all previous YouTube videos that, uh, that they, uh, they had online, so it is, um, it is, we wouldn't certainly be the first one.
I guess, since you mentioned St. Paul, I, I did phone the Reeve there to see, uh, you know, why. He said the numbers kept going down and down, and then they just, for legal reasons too, you're, you're on there forever, like, for, forever and ever, if there's something you said that you can be, you know, which in the public here you, you wouldn't be, you know, if someone's here, but they can go back and forever, uh, something you said. If, you know, if you, I don't think the, this is just my personal, I don't think we speak as freely as we used to, uh, when you're on, you know, you're always watching exactly what you say, so, um, yeah, I, I, myself, I, I would like to, uh, uh, stop recording myself, but it's a council's decision here, for sure.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I can honestly say that I will, I would speak what I feel is necessary, no matter there's a camera on me or not, and I mean, um, I feel that the public should be aware of what we're talking about at all times, and we have council meetings during the day when people are at work, so they, they review, and, uh, other councils and, and all that, so I'm, I'm certainly in favor, and I just think it's a, a step in the wrong direction, for sure, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just remind you that, I mean, um, I mean, your words exactly when you ran was, uh, this, uh, transparency in this council, right? And this is arguably what YouTube does for us, right?
Okay. Yeah, Councilor Crick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. I kind of agree with, uh, Councilor Scarsen. I think the numbers are fairly high for people who are watching YouTube, and of course, many can make it to, to council meetings because of work as well, so, yeah, I, I don't mind, I mean, I, I speak whatever I have to say, I have, doesn't matter to me, but
Anyone else like to, Councilor Crick?
Yeah, I guess I, I see the advantages both ways, really. There's, would you need to be able to speak freely without being, uh, concerned about some, any, any legal issues arising from it? Um, it, it has the potential to cost a lot, a lot of money to the municipality. I also see the need for transparency. Uh, that being said, the council chambers is open all the time, so I, I can, I can go either way on this myself.
But, Mr. Reeve, aren't we protected by what we say in council, Mr. C.A.O.?
There is, uh, through the Reeve, uh, to Councilor Kreviak, there is some, um, there is some protection afforded an individual counselor, uh, uh, in terms of defamation, et cetera, et cetera, based on things that, uh, are said at the council table. However, not everything is protected speech. Much like in the M.D., staff are protected in terms of liability except for gross negligence. You could, uh, you could make a, uh, a statement regarding something at council table that may, uh, um, that may indicate that you're not happy with a certain direction or a certain group or a certain person, however, uh, and I don't have to pull the actual, uh, uh, out of the MGA, uh, but defamation, for example, is not protected speech at a council table. So, uh, there are things, there is limited liability protection for counselors and staff when they speak, um, at a council table, however, it's not unlimited.
Anyone else, any other discussion, or anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Can we table this till, till later on, till after we have our in-camera session? There's a little bit I'd like to speak at, to, during in-camera on this item.
Sure, just table it, then make a motion to you.
I'll make a motion to table this until after our in-camera session, then.
Okay. We have a motion to table. I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Are you saying you want to discuss this in-camera?
There's, there's just a little bit more information that I think is, is, needs to be said about it, but it can't be shared publicly, so that's why.
Okay, all those, uh, I'll call for the vote. We're on nine, is that correct?
Eight point four point one. It's a different, uh...
Our agenda is different with the additions than what we had at the beginning, so we were...
I know, but this is eight point four one comes up as, as something different.
It's eight point four point one. Did you, did you scroll down?
Yeah, I re, I refreshed it, uh, already.
Mr. Reeve, that was, that was a, uh, an accidental error on our end, we added it to the agenda in the wrong spot. We fixed it, my apologies.
Okay, sorry, I just can't figure out what's going on here with my...
Sorry for that.
Hey, that's okay, I should, uh, my fault. Eight point four point one, are we on the same page here? Yes?
I think so, sir.
Thank goodness, you look sharp today, Mr. Visco.
Uh, thank you very much.
Yes.
Uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Reeve, members of council, I'm here for policy four eight point zero zero five, snow plowing of driveways policy amendment.
Okay.
Council adopted a revised snow plowing of driveways policy on December fourteen, twenty twenty-two. This policy was to be, was to become effective for the fall of twenty twenty-three. Changes to the policy included an age change and a resident lacking the means of clearing snow from their driveways. Administration has determined that the inclusion of the lack, of the term "lack of means" may be too vague in definition and is proposing the removal of that criteria. This amendment was presented at the committee of the whole on September nineteen, twenty twenty-three, with the recommendation from the committee that council approve the amendment as presented. Attached as Appendix A is policy four eight point zero zero five with the proposed changes as presented to the committee of the whole on September nineteen, twenty twenty-three. The cost and source of funding, snow plowing services, have been included in the twenty twenty-three operational budget and is entered in the twenty twenty-four operational budget for deliberation discussion. Communication strategy, public communication via the M.D. social and printed media, and its administration's recommended action that council adopts amending policy C four eight point zero zero five, snow plowing of driveways policy as presented.
Thank you, yes, Councilor Scarsen.
Yeah, so through this discussion, and this is a question, I guess, more for council, we were still fine with the seventy-five, age of seventy-five for snow plowing, is that what we're okay with, or...
Not, not me, I wasn't happy with that.
Yeah, I was surprised that it wasn't changed again, that's all, so.
So, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
How many people were abusing the flag, would you know?
Uh, through the Reeve to Councilor Kreviak, uh, no, I, I don't have the exact numbers, however, uh, my staff would document, uh, every time that they would go in and see, uh, uh, see a, a residence where perhaps the, the yard was all plowed out, but the driveway was left alone, um, it, for the only reason that the M.D. is going to come and do it, but, uh, tractors were in the yard or skid steers or, or, they had the means to clean it, uh, however, the call was made to the M.D. for, M.D. forces to go out and clean that, that yard.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'd just like to know how many people, though, but can I make an amendment to this, uh, bylaw, or this policy?
Sure.
I'd like to, uh, go to three A and, uh, change the seventy-five to seventy, at least because I know you won't support sixty-five, so amend the seventy-five to seventy, thank
So, is that motion number two, Councilor Kreviak, uh, just for...
That would be, yes. So, can I make the amendment proposal right now, like I did?
You can make a motion that states...
Make motion number two with the amendment.
Okay, with the amendment to change the age to seventy, from seventy-five.
From seventy-five to seventy.
From seventy-five to seventy, thank you, sorry.
That's okay. That's your motion? All right, gentlemen, we have a motion that moved by Councilor Kreviak on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number C dash four eight zero five, snow plowing of driveway policy with a further amendment to section three A to change the age from seventy-five to seventy. Any discussion on this? Yes, Councilor Scarsen?
Yeah, I'm just curious, too, I mean, you might have provided this once before, but, um, you know, it would be nice to see some tracking this winter, especially if you're saying that people are plowing their parking areas and not plowing their driveway, that seems very strange, but, you know, I'd hate it that we had to change this policy because of a couple of people that were abusing it to, as opposed to people that were benefiting it, right? So, it'd be nice to have some tracking numbers this winter, and maybe we can revisit it in the spring if it's being abused that badly, right, so...
So, uh, through the Reeve to Councilor Scarsen, uh, abuse of the policy was not the only driver of the amendment. Uh, uh, infrastructure services had brought back a report back, uh, last, uh, last spring about the costs of, uh, of snow plowing services, where we were into the hundred and twenty-five to hundred and fifty-ish thousand-dollar range for the program, uh, with a revenue generation of twenty-five-ish thousand. Um, so, council at the time of, uh, of deliberation, of last year's deliberation, uh, asked administration to come back with, uh, with some recommendations on, on changes to the policy. That's, that's the driving factor of this, is, is the cost associated with it, so we recommended some of the changes. The, the abuse of the policy is just one of the, uh, uh, one of the side factors of, of the change in the policy, if that answers your question.
So, you, you're not going to track it this winter?
Uh, through the Reeve, no, uh, we, we will, we can track, uh, whenever we have, uh, our staff call in or, or take pictures of the, of the driveways to show that either A, there's, there's maybe only an inch of snow when they've called in for us to come in, or, uh, they have, uh, their, their whole farmyard is all plowed out except the, uh, the, the driveway, uh, we definitely track that on our concerns list when the calls come in. Uh, we, we go back into it and add that information, add the pictures if necessary, so, yep.
So, wouldn't they, sorry, wouldn't they follow the policy as per, like, uh, we have to have so much snow before they can go out, or, like, after all the roads are done and all that kind of stuff?
Through the Reeve, uh, that is correct, where, uh, our policy states there has to be a minimum of ten centimeters of snow, uh, that kind of thing, um, there, a, and for the most part, we do follow that, however, somebody might have, uh, uh, five centimeters and then it, it has a, has a little bit of a drift, and then they have over ten centimeters, so we're clearing the whole thing for, for one small area, uh, it, it's difficult for us to go out there with the, with the measuring tape to do all of that, we're there, we just, when we get the call to clean it, we go there, we, we clean it when we're there, so...
You had a question also?
Yes, Councilor Swiger.
Yeah, just a comment, um, Councilor Kreviak brought it up last meeting, I think, that it was, uh, two thousand and seven that council came up with the hardship program, and, uh, and so then, o- over the years, though, we did notice that it was being abused, and so that's probably why the rates are going up as much as they are. Um, and so, you know, we'd ask to look into the program, I'm, I'm not against the program if it's not, if it's not being misused, I guess, but, and also, it depends on how much it's costing us. Uh, but what I'd also like to do is, if we're going to keep the program, get, uh, make sure folks know that they can actually pay the forty-five dollars or whatever to buy a flag, and I, and I've talked to folks that didn't even realize they could do that, so they've heard of this hardship program, and, uh, y- you know, you hate to think, well, they could just pay forty-five bucks and get it, have it done anyway, uh, but they'll rely on the hardship program because it's free. So, I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough balance, uh, but somehow, maybe we should advertise a bit better that we have kind of that flag program, too, and, and m- maybe we do, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking a lot of people maybe aren't hearing, you know, both of those, so they have that option of buying a flag. Anyways, thanks.
Councilor Crick and then Councilor Kreviak, correct?
Yes, so i- in regards to the motion that's been made, um, I think we can, I'm, I personally am going to vote opposed to that, because I think we should stick with the seventy-five age. The only other option that I would be opposed to is just getting rid of the whole snowplow program, hardship program in the first place. It's, uh, we don't have a hardship program for people to pay their taxes, we don't, we don't give out, uh, incentives or money for people to help, help people that are over a certain age pay their taxes. Um, that's, yeah, that's...
That's, that's also get it different, but, Mr. Visco, if you're taking pictures, then you would know more or less how many are abusing this policy, right?
Uh, through the Reeve to, uh, Councilor Kreviak, uh, like I said, it's, it's tracked on, uh, on our, uh, on our concerns list when the call comes in, anytime, uh, somebody calls in, that gets put on the concerns list it's dealt with. Um, however, not every single situation is, uh, is, is documented back on the concerns list where, you know, the, the snowplow operator might just come in and tell the foreman or, or something, and it just kind of gets lost in the wayside with everybody's busy schedules, the, it, it, maybe it doesn't get tracked back, so we have some data on the, uh, on, on the abuse of the program, uh, but, but again, uh, I'll, I'll reiterate that the abuse of the program is not the driving factor to the change in the, in the policy. Uh, the, the driving factor was, again, brought up at, uh, budget deliberations when it came to the cost, so that's the, that would be the, the driving factor to this.
Well, nice comment.
Yes.
I just want to say we need to support our seniors, and if you guys turn sixty-five, are you going to refuse the O.A.S.? I just want to say we need to support our seniors, and if you guys turn sixty-five, are you going to refuse the O A S?
So right now, it's forty-five dollars for a flag, right? For people that are not part of the hardship program. What is the actual cost of the M D on average when somebody goes out to clear a driveway after a flag's been purchased?
So through the reef to Councilor Crick, we had that, we had those numbers last time we were here. The cost to do the to do the driveways for a large trucks or our tandem sanding trucks to go in there and do that was, I believe, about, on average, depending on the distance they have to travel, about a hundred and twenty-five dollars per driveway. And again, that's based on fifteen minutes. Each flag is is fifteen minutes. So it was about a hundred, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five dollars for for the larger trucks to go, and our one tons or our five fifties, fifty-five hundred smaller plow trucks. I think we we average that out to be about eighty-five dollars or ninety dollars for these, for the service. Again, depending on how far they have to travel from the shop, that kind of thing. But that was the average cost per per driveway.
Yeah, Councilor Scarsen and Councilor Slipchuk.
Sure, yeah, I got a few comments. So first of all, I'm sure that it must be in the Rural Review, right? That the flagship or the flag program is coming out. So that, you know, everyone should have that in in front of them, right? Secondly, I wouldn't be opposed at all to, I mean, forty-five bucks, I think. It used to be twenty-five bucks just a couple of years ago, and I think we could double that, and still people are getting a bargain, right? And, you know, you pay someone in a skid steer a hundred and twenty bucks an hour to come do that, and that includes, you know, half an hour travel time for sure. And I think you're still ahead of the game if you have to get your driveway done three times a year, or whatever it is, or four times, and, you know, you pay a few hundred bucks for that. So that's just my opinion. And then thirdly, only because you've mentioned a few times, what's this concerns list you keep on mentioning? I don't know. No reply.
Councilor Slipchuk.
Do, first off, do any of other municipalities or counties even offer this? And I'll just say for the record, I'm sticking with the seventy-five age. Like, we can pay, because I know my dad lived in the country till he was eighty-some. He took care of his own snow, and if we couldn't, we bought a flag or we hired somebody to come and do it.
That's through the reef. Through the reef to Councilor Slipchuk, in different variations, there are some municipalities who are still providing a service. It is, it is not as common as it once was. Many municipalities have have stopped doing it, liability reasons being one of them. There are still municipalities around to do it, there's no doubt about that. So we're not, we're not completely uncommon, but it is not as common as it used to be.
Yes, go ahead.
So the other municipalities, are there ages? Do you know what their age are?
We would have to do a do a survey. It's all over the, it's all over the map. Some require an actual doctor's note to be on file, others don't have an age, others are just, everybody buys a flag who wants a flag. It's kind of all over the map.
I think when we started this program, it wasn't really an age thing. It was more of a disability. If you needed a hardship flag, that's why it was called hardship flag. So how much savings did we get from bumping it up five years? Like, what kind of, do you have any projection of what we saved last year?
For the reef, we haven't done it. It's still as it was, where it's sixty-five years old. We, this would, this fall would be the first time that this policy would have been in effect. We finished off the year last year with the with the old policy, which was sixty-five, and and that was it. This policy was to come into effect this fall. So we, I have no data on on the savings by increasing the age.
Do you have any kind of a guess, or?
No, I I wouldn't.
Like I said, it was a hardship was for people that really needed it, not, it wasn't, my dad's almost ninety and he still plows his driveway, but the next guy could be sixty-five and he can't. It's just, it is, it is what it is, yeah. The tough thing to put an age on it, because you could be sixty-nine and be totally disabled, you can't do your driveway.
I think, Mr. Reeve, at the beginning, it was age sixty-five, then we need some tweaks to it to make it a hardship, but the age sixty-five was at the beginning in two thousand and seven.
Sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it's a, it's a hard one, because when you say hardship program, I think, well, what does that, what does that mean? If I have no money, maybe if I'm broke, I have no money, and I can't get out of a driveway. But I don't, don't know what the hardship was, you know, because, like, I'd consider that. Maybe it helps somebody because it's, because they can't afford to have, to contract somebody out or whatever, but we're not doing that. So everyone's going to use the hardship program if they can.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, Councilor Crick.
We we could simply take out the age and just have it if they're physically disabled and can't plow their own driveway. That would need another option, right?
I guess if you're, yeah, we're just debating this first motion here, yeah, for an age, yeah.
I just say it doesn't even help if you're, I mean, if you're, if you're not disabled, you're perfectly healthy, but you're, you know, you're seventy years old, but you you can't drive equipment or push us, you know, you're not, you don't have a snowplow, so you expect somebody to do that. Somebody's a single woman living out in the country somewhere, not disabled, but healthy. Do you expect her to, I don't know, you know, how would she get onto this program?
Deputy Reeve for that.
We have, we have an uncle that's out in, out in the sticks. He's just turned turned ninety, cancer survivor, can hardly walk. Do you think he has the patience to wait two, three, four, five centimeters? He, you know, he realizes the policy. The policy says that X amount of centimeters have to hit. He's so impatient, he'll call his neighbor with the tractor, give him twenty bucks, and the guy comes in and does it for him. I mean, that's, that's, that's what we should be looking at. I mean, it's, you know, the guy can't walk, but he's calling his neighbor, hey, if you're driving by, you know, drive by and, you know, and plow my driveway. He has no patience to wait for Mr. Bezalco's team to come out a week later to get it done. He he calls on neighbors, and that's what we should be relying on. We're relying on on government. We want, like, say, we want to step back from government to stay out of our business, but yet we, you know, yet we rely on government to to plow our driveway. We have, you know, if we have hardships, there's neighbors, I mean, I, you know, I say, I said that in, you know, like in the committee hall. There's, you know, I have residents in, like, like my ward that have their sons that are living with them, and they're quite younger, that don't plow the driveway, wait for the M D to come down and do it. You know, at what point are we, are we looking at government? We should be less government reliant, not more government reliant.
Mr. Reeve, one question for council, because this is really a service level question, is what separates an urban resident in the hamlet of Ardmore, Cherry Grove, and others from, particularly as a senior, from a senior who lives rural. We're not plowing driveways. As a matter of fact, council passed the bylaw earlier this year to force people in Ardmore, I mean, in the hamlets, to shovel the snow from the sidewalk. So rural residents seem to get a hand up over those that are, what I would call our hamlet, our our urban residents. So what what is the separation between that? Or should we be coming back with the policy to do hardship and driveways in our hamlets as well?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, you can compare a small sidewalk to a large, long driveway as well.
On that, on that rebuttal, there is a seniors home in Cherry Grove that has a substantial, large driveway. The community gets together and they they take care of it themselves.
All right, let's, we have a motion here. I think we had enough discussion on it, so I'm going to call for the vote. Okay, that is defeated. Looking for another motion? I'll make a motion for option one. Okay, thank you, Councilor Slipchuk. For making a motion that council adopts amending policy number C four A zero zero five, snow plowing of driveways policy as presented. Any discussion on this motion? Councilor Crick.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm in favor of this motion right now, although I think we should maybe look at option three as well. And according to the Deputy Reeve's words, there, we should be relying on neighbors and the government getting getting out of business, allowing private people to do the business. And I think option three would also be a good one to have, but we can put option one in place for this winter, and then option three, and then they can bring back policy that's, we're not getting so involved in it. I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, Councilor Scarsen?
Just a comment, I guess, I, you know, I don't think we're seeing a lot of seventy and seventy-five-year-olds moving out to the country. These are people that have probably lived in their homes for forty or fifty years. And I would have guessed it was a small token to return back. They've been paying taxes, M D, for decades and decades. And some people, like me, for an example, I'll be in my house for thirty, forty more years, and all my taxes, I mean, I live on a provincial highway, and I take my garbage into town to, right? So, I mean, you know, to me, it's a small, small price to pay for decades worth of taxes. So anyways, that's my thoughts.
Any other discussion on this motion? Guys want to say something but don't want to, eh? Yes, go ahead.
So I'll just say, yeah, come and do my driveway in Ardmore, then, right? It's like thirty feet wide and ninety feet long, right? I understand your comment, Councilor Scarsen, but, you know, we're just, you know, taxes keep going up because we're, you know, having to do different things, and I don't think it's a hardship. I think pay forty-five bucks, get a flag or whatever, but, anyway, thank you.
Can you pay, just a question, can you pay forty-five dollars and have a driveway like his done in Ardmore? Anyway, like, I don't think you can.
For the reef and to all of council, we haven't had that that request. So having said that, if somebody paid forty-five dollars to have their their small little, you know, garage pad done, they may not see the value in that. So I don't, I think that's the reason why we've just never had the had the request from anybody in in the in the hamlets.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Okay, on to number nine, nine point one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So correspondence and information for this week, there has been several invitations. There is one in particular from from Laika. There is an invitation and request for donation, nine point three. An invitation to, and the agenda for the Laika Annual General Meeting. An invitation from Laika for the Fall Garden Cleanup. As well, there is a public letter that you'll see regarding Mini Lake and some concerns regarding that. And we have two that came in late. The first one is an invitation from Four Wing for, I'll just try to find it here. Do you have that one that just came in late? It's to attend the. It's here. There it is. It's twenty twenty-four Cold Lake Air Show Corporate Opportunities Luncheon. So everybody who was involved in twenty twenty-two has been invited to this luncheon. It is on sixteenth of October, eleven thirty to one thirty, at the Cold Lake Air Force Museum. It's behind the Tri-City Mall. And that is, for those who participated in twenty twenty-two, is a luncheon to talk about twenty twenty-four. And as well, we got a, just the email just came yesterday, an invitation for this, for CNRL, and I believe it's their Lobster Fest. And I don't have too much information on that because I actually haven't seen the invitation myself. But I'm sure. It's not the Lobster Fest? Steak and shrimp?
So it is scheduled for Saturday, October twenty-first, at a cost of sixty-five dollars per person or five hundred and twenty dollars per table of eight. They did also make a request for sponsorship, but it is my understanding that the Planning and Community Services Department is is addressing that specific request.
And is it CNRL? Do confirm it?
It is, it is a CNRL event. I believe it's advertised as one, but it's a separate committee that's been making, that's made the request.
So, Mr. Reeve, this is different from the steak and lobster event?
Yes.
I thought they were just substituting shrimp for lobster to save money.
I feel the same.
Yes?
Nothing of value, no.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to accept that as as information.
All right, thank you, Councilor, sorry, Deputy Reeve Fadiev, for making a motion on behalf of council. I'll wait for it to come up. The council accepts the following correspondence and information, one through, was it one through nine? One through six. Any discussion on this motion? Saying, and I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Whoever'd like to start on reports, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So T and U BBQ, September fifteenth. Appreciate it being invited, so it was kind of nice just to have a burger and talk chat with some of the staff or whatever. So it's a good, good thing to have. September eighteenth, Beaver River Regional Waste Management Committee. Little update, they had an old compact trailer, unit three, that was sold at auction for ninety-five hundred bucks to Ritchie Brothers. It was in really not great shape, so we were glad to get rid of it, apparently. Transfer station doors, so Cold Lake has a transfer, a big transfer station, Bonneville has one. They had issues with doors over the last year or so, so we finally got new doors ordered, and they're in operation now, apparently. Some discussion about new landfill sites. We have a contract that is up in April, so presently hauling all our waste to Thorhill. So that's up for discussions coming up and see where we end up hauling waste to. Riverland Recreational Trail Group Meeting, they talked about, Riverland Recreational Trail Group is the group that kind of works under MinaCor, but looks after the the trail and keeps things going. So they're talking about outhouses, because they're always having issues with outhouses in some of these rural areas. And there was discussion about the Ardmore one-two, because it looks like it's from about nineteen thirty. It looks like an old railway outhouse or whatever. It's really not non-existent, so there are discussions on precast concrete ones or or metal kind of. There's ones that look kind of like, very nice, but little metal C can type things. September twenty-second, there was a group called Group Source filming the trail for Lakeland Travel, and it was kind of an initiative through MinaCor. And I'm not sure if maybe our group had something to do with that through Esther, maybe, but anyway. So the group was along the trail filming, and so I kind of organized a bit of a stop at Ardmore, had some school kids out, and they got involved in that, and they they got in some video and some pictures, so that was nice. And then the Fine Arts Society announcement on September twenty-second. So it was a nice tour of the Bonneville Centralized High School, old gym where the new theater would be, so that was. So that was nice to attend that. Last one, recently met with Mark Brown. So if you remember, several months ago, there's an industrial subdivision that was being proposed for north of Ardmore by the, just south of Pure Environmental. And so that's kind of going to come back to us eventually, but they're having issues getting approvals for highway approaches. So that's the end of my report.
Hey, Mr. Reeve. I also attended the summer barbecue, was a great event for the staff, and thank all the hardworking staff who made that possible, all the work they did. Had the BRFA meeting, renovation project number two was awarded to E Construction for two point six nine four million. And that's for the water sewer connection, groundwork, and paving all around that building. Also, AHS has agreed to pay two hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars for two power load stretcher systems to be installed in October seventeenth and eighteenth. And they have a capacity of seven hundred pounds, so will be no more heavy lifting for EMS staff. And from now on, all new ambulances will come with a power load stretcher system, so that's very good. Yesterday had lodge meeting. As you all know, the Colleague Lodge has been demolished, it's been vacant for three years. It couldn't be repurposed, it's too old of a building. The land is expected to be reclaimed by the end of September, and in the meantime, turn to some green space. The number of vacancies is way down, Bonneville only has eleven by next week, and Colleague only has nine. And of course, there was a COVID outbreak in the Bondi Lodge, and there are six positive cases there now. And that's it for me, thank you.
Yeah, I attended the Bonneville, the Bonneville Lake Land Lodge and Housing Meeting as well, so not in the House, covered there. Councilor Criviac covered that, but I attended Laika workshop on last weekend there. Where is it here? It was on identified fishes, and everything I found very interesting. And then we did a workshop on Saturday, and on Sunday, we had a field day in the lake and trapping minnows and everything. It was very interesting to learn about all the fishes and where we have to maybe look after our environment in our lakes here and everything, so it was very interesting, thank you.
Yeah, nothing really since the last one, except for the library meeting. So we kind of went over our budget, there's going to be a little bit of an increase for their ask, as they present in a, I think in about a month from now, and yeah, that's about it, so thank you.
I was at the staff barbecue as well, I think it's a good time there. And then had same BRFA meeting as Councilor Criviac and the Reeve. The project came in under budget, so that's good for the renovations. And also had a FCSS board meeting last week. They did a survey at the FCSS in regards to homelessness in the area. And it's, the way the survey put it, it put people housing insecure. So you could be homeless or just worried that you're going to lose your home for not being able to pay for it or something. And there was, there's eleven people that did the survey that earned more than a hundred and ten thousand, actually showed up as housing insecure, so just kind of, you know, at risk of maybe losing their home or something. They had about a hundred and two responses, I think, for the survey. And that would be mostly people that were in different, some of the different agencies, like using the services from FCSS or the Dragonfly Center or the Friendship Center, different ones like that, that that'd be the majority of the people that actually did the survey, so that's about it for me.
Yeah, the Bonneville Library Meeting and same thing, budget as well. I think they're presenting to the town today, and then probably be at the M.D. here soon. Chamber had their BSN meeting last week, Business Support Network, and anyone who hasn't been should go. It's just kind of a big brainstorming thing for a bunch of local business owners and such, so it's pretty good. And they do have their business resiliency awards coming up here, so I think the invitation's been sent out for that. So working on that. And then Sports Tourism Committee, we had a delegation come in from the twenty twenty-six Winter Games that we're going to talk a bit more here in camera, so that's it.
Thank you for that.
I also attended the BFRA meeting with Councilor Crick and Councilor Criviac, and Councilor Criviac gave a pretty detailed report on that. Also went with Councilor Sawyer to that Clayton Bellamy. It was pretty cool. There's some old artists that, and Mrs. Perry, she's a teacher, that was with BCHS forever, and she was the one kind of emceeing the whole thing, and she did an awesome job. There's a lot of old artists that played to open up this event, and it was pretty cool to see some of these real old artists come in, and they're still got the willingness to play the instrument, and it was very, very well attended and very well done. And we had a ribbon cutting ceremony, and then we got to see in the back. And it's pretty cool, right, in BCHS there, there's kind of a beautification placed in the back, so worked really good for performing arts, you know, for makeup and hair and everything. It's right off to the back. I didn't even know that existed, but they have that program that's well-attended. The principal told me that it's a well-attended course that BCHS is providing there, so that's pretty cool. Also, we had a C two meeting last night, Dana and I, and I just want to, we're also talking budget, and budget, I think, is going to the town. They're going to have a, talk to the town about the budget, and I think they'll be coming soon, it'll probably be our next meeting. But I also, like Les always talks about, he's talking to both CEOs, and they help him a lot. So just thanks to Al and, you know, the CEO from the town of Bonneville, they help him a lot, and things are progressing. And I, maybe too much information coming from Les now, but he's really getting it together, so I'm really proud of the fact, and proud that my, you know, Al, that you help out whenever he needs, and I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Reeve.
And I did forget to highlight that one, so I didn't talk about it. But so the C two meeting, I did make a note here, though, that they have a sewer issue, Mr. C.A.O., that you may want to help out with somehow. The new building, the Gen Mac Hall? I guess, anyway, there's a sewer line there, Mr. C.A.O., that runs out from the building that has been forever, but it's, it kind of backs up intermittently, apparently, so I don't know how serious it is, but they've had two contractors camera that line for them, but the both contractors gave them different opinions of what it was. So I just suggested that possibly, before they hire somebody else to do a third one, we might be able to go in there, you know, spend like half an hour and camera them, that line for them, at really little cost, if anything. Save them a bunch of money, save us money, I guess.
Thank you, I haven't heard anything about it. I would suggest that the town would be in a better position to talk about a sewer line into a town sewer than we would be. I'm also hesitant in that the C two is a part-nine corporation. It runs itself, and I, at what point, if we do this, what other things will we just go help with, with the C two center?
I'm just suggesting, because I know we do have the equipment. We didn't promise nothing, they're just.
We can certainly, I can certainly have the utility department, you know, give us a call and.
But I'm sure that town of Bonneville has all this apparatus as well, don't they? I'm not sure if they do or not.
Yeah, and the town, it's into a town sewer line that we have nothing to do with. So I'll certainly bring it up with, you know, Brian's here obviously listening. We can certainly see if we can help out, just slightly reticent in that it is a separate corporation, and would I be able to build them back for our time?
Well, I'm just, I was asking because we end up paying for it anyway, right? Us and the town, so if it saves, you know, if it saves them, you know, twenty or thirty thousand bucks, maybe it saves us half of that. You had something else, Mr. Criviac?
Yeah, I have a question. I was going to mention this a while ago and just forgot about it. But we used to get in our, in our packages, the check register, and we don't get it no more, so just wondering why, or why that's been stopped.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, there has been a check register since before I started as C.A.O. The Reeve has mentioned it to me a few months ago, and it'll be coming as part of the financial quarterly summary. But there hasn't been a check registry since before I started as C.A.O. I would ask council the question, what do you think you'll gain in terms of knowledge from looking at checks that were written three months ago? That were written inside budget, what knowledge is there to be gained by looking at old, stale-dated checks that have been written?
Yeah, they should be given every month at the last council meeting or the first council meeting, whatever.
Again, has not happened since before I started. And again, what information would checks that were written a month ago provide council? Are there questions? Is council having some trust issues with the finance department? Is that what we're indicating by asking for a check registry?
Just for information, that's all, thank you.
And I would ask council again, what information does that actually provide council? That Joe Blow got a check for eighty-two dollars and seventeen cents?
To see where all the checks are being written to, and for what, that's all, information.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to go in camera into closed session.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
If I may also just request, as part of the motion to go into closed session, to approve lifting the BRFA agreement discussion and then the recording of council meetings discussion from the table, so that they can be discussed in closed session as well before.
So you need a motion for that?
Yeah, we can cast it if everyone would like to see before they make that motion.
Okay, would someone like to make this motion? There's someone, who made that motion? Councilor Slupchak? It's gone up there. Okay, thank you, Councilor Slupchak, for making a motion on behalf of council. Item five-one, BFRA Agreement Review, FOIP, section twenty-three, twenty-four, and item eight point three, is continue of recording of council meetings and be lifted from the table. And that is, this meeting goes into closed session at the time for the following reasons, FOIP, section twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-seven. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, go ahead.
I just think it should be noted that I can't be held responsible if I'm grumpy for being hungry.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. You need a Snickers, Mar? I don't. I have a dad's cookie. Okay, thank you, we're back. Just looking for a motion, I guess.
I'll make the motion to table the discontinuing of council meeting recordings till our next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Who would like to adjourn the meeting? Councilor Crick? All in favor? Carried, thank you.